Agenda for tonight is to have the second reading of the proposed budget for the 2013-14 year. And this time we'll have roll call by Madam Clerk.
I'm thinking no, but you know.
Leslie? Mr. McEwen?
Here.
Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mrs. Tinglestames?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Singer?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Okay. Chief's commendation.
Mayor, Council. I wanted to bring to your attention an act by a citizen. Mr. Woodrum owns an insurance company. And he called us because there's a delay when we take an accident report, usually four to five days before we can get the report back from KSP and actually give it to the citizen that's been involved in the accident. And during that time, sometimes there's needs by that citizen that their insurance company can help them with. But they have no way of identifying the other party and the insurance information. So he suggested we come up with these cards that we put the information needed on the back of the cards at the accident scene and hand them to the citizens and then they're able to access the other person's insurance companies. And the insurance companies can start working on getting things going while during those five days. Like if you need an extra car, or you know, we need to rent a car, that kind of thing. So during the course of that, which was obviously a very good service for citizens, the discussion of digital cameras and photographing accidents came up and we were very short of digital cameras in the police department. And he said, well, you know, this affects us pretty directly. And he bought for the police department and donated 12 digital cameras that our officers now use on the street. And we thought that was very worthy of a recognition. So I have... Steve, if you'll come up here. We have a chief's commendation and it reads, "This chief's commendation is being presented to you as a token of our gratitude for your generosity in June of 2013. During this time, you purchase and donate to the Georgetown Police Department much-needed digital cameras. These cameras will be used by our line officers to better document accidents and assist in the collection of evidence at a wide variety of crime scenes. Your generosity speaks highly of you as an individual and your willingness to get involved in community needs represents your business in a most favorable manner. Please accept a heartfelt thank you from the Georgetown Police Department." And then the actual commendation reads, "Awarded to Steve Woodrum. Your actions speak highly of you as an individual and as a member of the Georgetown Police Department, as Georgetown community. Thank you for a job well done."
Now you're caught!
For the record, I'm getting ready to attack.
Thanks, Steve. The newspaper needs a different camera. They've got a whole lot right here.
I did want to say, I've got Shannon Lloyd, my office manager here. I did want to commend the chief and actually Phil Holly for giving us that opportunity. I think it really goes to show that the chief and the police force is really interested in working with the community in a different way than just enforcing laws, trying to help them when they have a bad, you know, bad circumstance happen to them. So I wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to work with you and the chief because he does a great job. So thanks very much. And I appreciate this. I didn't, wasn't expecting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, very much. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky, adopting the annual budget for the fiscal period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. Sponsor: Councilmember Brad Penn. Summary: Now therefore, be it ordained by the City of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows: Section 1 adopts by incorporated exhibit the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget of the City of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Governmental Funds: Prior Year Revenues: $450,235. Revenues: Municipal Taxation: $1,935,000. Licenses and Permits: $14,770,946. Fines and Forfeitures: $79,000. Intergovernmental Revenues: $2,865,370. Charges for Service: $146,900. Other Revenue: $45,100. Other Financing Sources/Transfers: $1,050,000. Total City Revenues: $20,892,316. Expenditures: General Government: $1,021,837. City Council: $150,016. City Clerk: $195,882. Police: $4,784,969. Public Works: $1,065,134. Fire: $4,511,583. Code Enforcement: $66,099. Building Inspection: $338,835. Dispatch Telecommunications: $1,271,088. Utilities: $442,000. Community Services: $3,774,266. Capital Outlay: $2,534,272. Debt Service: $845,293. Transfers to Other Funds: $341,277. Total City Expenditures: $21,342,551. Proprietary Funds: Prior Year Revenues: $658,421. Revenues: Sanitation: $1,812,000. Recycling: $164,920. Landfill: $120,000. Cemetery: $241,167. Other Financing Sources/Transfers: $345,277. Total Proprietary Revenues: $2,683,364. Expenditures: Sanitation: $1,310,171. Recycling: $223,341. Stormwater: $295,285. Landfill: $105,200. Cemetery: $291,158. Transfers to Other Funds: $1,050,000. Total Proprietary Expenditures: $3,275,155. Section 2: Authorizes the mayor except as provided in the Georgetown Purchasing Policy adopted in Municipal Order 11-028 to enter into any contract or agreements necessary to fulfill the operation of city government within the allocations listed in this ordinance. Section 3: Provides that if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 4: Provides that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Publicly introduced and read for the first time July 1, 2013; publicly read the second time July 2, 2015.
All right, what I'll need is a motion to approve and then a second and then we'll have any discussion that the council would like to have.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McEwen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Penn. Now, discussion, council.
Here, I'll lead us off.
Okay, about ready to call for roll call.
I'll tee off first if, not tee off, that's an inappropriate term, that's a golf term, something I enjoy, something like this. Last night, I believe it was last night, 24 hours ago roughly, there was a statement made and maybe a point of clarification that we weren't receiving information from the county on a quarterly basis. Brad, maybe that came from you, was that correct?
No, that's what, yes.
And today I did confirm Brad is correct. We're not receiving it on a quarterly basis, we're receiving it on a monthly basis and that came directly from City Hall. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, you know, sometimes we're told things that aren't totally accurate. And I don't, you know, you made a pretty bold statement about that last night. Have you received them on a monthly basis? It doesn't matter that I've received them, we as a city are receiving them. And the statement that you made implied that that county wasn't doing what they're supposed to do. And it was confirmed to me today that we are. Not only are we receiving it on a monthly basis, we're given the information on a monthly basis. And I guess to me, that illustrates even more that we need to communicate. We need to sit down, if we're going to make cuts in community services, if we want to make changes, whatever we want to do, we need, we need both parties to be at the table. It doesn't need to be a unilateral decision. I know I said that last night, but it is frustrating when, when a statement such as that is made, as boldly as it was made, and it's inaccurate. And I think this council needs to know that. I think citizens deserve to know that the information is being exchanged. And whether it filters down to us, not everything filters down to us. There's a lot of stuff going on in this city government that doesn't make it to this room or to our desk. And that's okay. I mean, we're not here to micromanage city government. But I want it to be known that that information is being exchanged. And I'm not going to support the proposed budget tonight primarily because of the way that it's being handled as it relates to the community services.
I'll respond to that, David. When we discussed this in terms of reporting, in our inter-local meetings, it was specifically discussed that it would be reported to the council on a quarterly basis by the department heads in this room, in this, in this setting. Simply getting a billing from the county is not a report. That's simply information. I know what we get. It's not a report. It's not a, we discussed in specificity, things like number of calls in the animal shelter, number of inspection reports from the electrical inspector's office, call reports from the ambulance service. That's what we discussed. We know we get billings from the county every month. And when I said "we" don't receive that information, what I meant was, we as this body do not receive that information. So the statement that I made last night was, last night was in no way a misleading statement. It was a very accurate statement. Unless you are getting those quarterly reports, or you are getting those reports every month, the statement that I made last night is an accurate statement.
You're not saying the county wasn't providing the information? That's what I understood.
No, that's not what I said. What I said was, we agreed to quarterly reports to this body by those department heads and that we've not received those.
By the department heads?
Yes. Well, we've not received a quarterly report period.
Brad, it's okay. Listen, I know I can't convince you. I'm just sharing with the public that we are receiving the information. It's coming to City Hall. City Hall is sharing it with the county, okay? It's happening.
It's not happening.
Well, Brad, there were 13 meetings. And there need to be more. And if we need to put together another committee...
No, what we need to do is we need to follow what was agreed upon in those meetings, David.
And I would say that it is, but you know, I would...
I'm sure you would. I have no doubt about it.
Okay, one at a time.
I've got a question, Mayor. I didn't mean to get in there.
Probably need to, go ahead, Mark.
During those 13 meetings that three of you were a part of, was it either implied or directly stated? And I don't know, I'm just asking. I don't know the answer to this. That the city was going to take a reduction in the funding for those inter-locals in this next budget year? I don't know the answer. I'm just asking.
I don't think anything was ever stated definitively, no. Absolutely not.
Was it ever?
But...
The fallback to that, Mark, was that we got that information early. That was the fallback. It wasn't that, that, I don't think anyone in any of those meetings said, hey, next year, we're cutting this, we're cutting this, we're cutting this. What we did say was, please come to us with the information early enough so once your budget is, is accepted, there's no surprises. So no, there was, there was never any statement that we were going to, or there was never any commitment that we would never cut any of those departments either.
Now, what was said was, there would be a time period in which the county would be notified by the city or the city be notified by the county that there was going to be a reduction or a change in the inter-locals.
I've got a couple additional questions. I didn't know if anybody...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was giving myself a chance to talk, so if nobody is, I will. As all eight of us know, and Mayor as well, so I'm sorry, nine of us, in two years, we're, because of the opportunity that Toyota is providing to this plant, there, there is a great potential for a significant reduction in that payroll tax, starting in two years. So we, we would all agree on that, correct? Which, I guess, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but I guess what I'm looking at is, is that if there's a chance that we're going to take a reduction in our payroll tax, and there is a need to help grow employment here as far as bringing in new employers, that would obviously bring in new people that work at those plants or any type of plant. It could be a restaurant, it could be any type of employer that would employ people. Why would we then go in and reduce Scott United's funding by 3750 when they're the primary vehicle and helping bring in new opportunities to the community? I mean, I don't know, I just, I'm just asking. That's one of the questions unfortunately I didn't think about until after we left last night. I mean, it's, they're the primary vehicle that helps drive employment. Why would we then take the reduction in that funding? It wasn't directly towards an individual, just, I guess I just wanted to put it out there.
We did across-the-board cuts in community services and Scott United, I think it was 3750, as you said, and that's, I think, what, about a 10% reduction? We got it down to a flat 30,000. It's just one of those situations where, you know, I wish, you know, there's concerns, you know, as we went over the budget last Wednesday night, you know, those sorts of concerns, you know, I wish you were here to voice them because, you know, maybe that would have been something we would have fixed then. And tonight at second reading, if this thing's, if this thing doesn't pass tonight, that's certainly something we'll revisit.
So that's, again, I guess I go back to the question I was asking last night. I mean, how did you all come up with the numbers that the four or five of you came up with? How did you, where did the numbers come from? How did you determine what you were going to cut each department? I don't know, I just, I'm asking. I mean, I think it's important, I mean, I think we all know what...
I'm pretty sure we went over that explicitly last night. I'm pretty sure Kelly answered that question last night.
Maybe I missed that, I don't remember that. How you determine within each agency how much you were going to, each one of these cuts here on this sheet of paper that directly pertain to either an inter-local or any department that is going to be cut? How'd you come up with those numbers?
First we opened our minds and then we opened our mouths.
So basically what you're saying is, is that you didn't really, going back to what I was asking last night, there was no communication with those department heads that are, A, in the room or not in the room, on what the ramifications are going to be?
Well, if, if this council had set out like it talked about during the first two hours of the meeting when it abruptly ended after that silly vote and break that we took, we might have talked about it here as we thought we might do, in this chamber, on that evening.
Which night was that? I apologize, I'm sorry.
What night did you propose that we vote for the 5% and we did it and left?
I think that was the first night that Mark missed.
Yeah. They weren't here that night, if we'd proceeded, you know.
I think we went on, at least, I voted no on the straw vote back on June 3. If memory serves, you voted no on the straw vote as well as far as accepting the budget. But at the time, the straw vote reflected a 5 to 3, yes vote by the council to accept the mayor's budget back on June 3. And the thing went through three weeks where we didn't talk about it. Nobody talked about it to me, Mayor said, Stacy said, hardly any calls to the office about it. So by that reckoning, I think everybody thought it was going to pass. And then June 24th, it didn't. So we're left with a week. And so we met on Wednesday. Now, in reference to your question as far as talking to individual department heads for every community service line or every line in the budget that we cut, our meetings are announced, they're public. People know we're here based upon advertising, what's in the newspaper, tonight, last night, Wednesday night. So if the department heads want, are upset about the cuts or object to them, they're welcome to come to the podium. And they oftentimes do.
So let me make sure I understand you correctly. And correct me if I'm wrong. You're stating that it's the, it's the responsibility of the department heads to come to us, not the responsibility of city council to go to those department heads?
Absolutely. Or ideally, ideally it should work through the mayor's office. And that's where I use, that's who I usually talk to when I have a question about something related to the budget. I go talk to the mayor. What a crazy idea.
Mark, have you talked to the department heads about the cuts? Are you aware of the impact?
I've talked to three of them just since I got back into town last Friday, actually.
Okay. I've actually talked to more.
It's, and again, all I'm just trying to make sure of is that, A, if we're going to make, and I think most of us know how this vote's going to come out tonight. And all I'm asking is, you know, I, I agree with some of the things that are on the sheet, I do. I really do. But there's other, there's, there's, there's some things on here I don't agree with. And that's my right, just as it is your right, to vote how you're going to vote tonight.
I just really wish you'd been here. I mean, and I think, because we, you and I had talked in the hallway back early June, maybe it was June 3, and when we talked about voting no on the straw vote. And I really think, you know, you would have been able to, to help us a lot on Wednesday night and weren't here. So I'm sorry.
I've got one other question I want to ask. And Terry got, Mr. Thomas got up last night and we talked about his department specifically. And the fact, either somebody here or Mr. Thomas can correct me if I'm wrong, but just in the last six years, maybe seven, his department has been reduced by...
Is it five people or six people?
One from 34 to 29. His department is being reduced, or his department has reduced, and we've seen two other departments in the city that obviously have increased during that same timeframe. One of those departments, and again, it's, I'm not, you all can put two and two together and figure out who the department is. One of those departments is not listed on the sheet. We see the police, you know, we took telephone, technical supplies, overtime. Why was the other department that's not on the list not included?
Well, on the sanitation end, in the last five years, we've changed equipment and he has made strides in efficiency in the way they, they operate with...
With, with, Mr. Thomas, okay, all right.
Sanitation, I mean, we, we, in the last two years, have purchased two automated trucks that would use less personnel to work...
You have a gripper and an automatic?
We have one automated truck.
Okay.
And the gripper. And the gripper. But with work through, with Toyota, I believe, improved efficiencies in the pickups. So there've been some changes that have been made there. In reference to overtime with the police, for example, after that proposed change, one of us spoke with the chief about making a shift within the budget to make that work. Yeah, forgive me, I don't know which other one you're talking about, fire?
What about the department that's excluded from the list?
Say it. What are you talking about?
Let me, let me answer. The sanitation department is on pace to spend $420,000 this year in salaries. According to the sheet that he gave us last night, there are 50, I think, four or 57 months of vacancies on this sheet.
I heard that last night.
Let me finish.
I was having a conversation.
So you have 54 months' worth of vacancies on this, and you know what? Everything's gotten done. Those guys work. They do a great job at what they do. Are you saying right now that you support increasing their budget by 50% in salaries?
I'm asking you, what you, two of you have answered, tried to answer the question, but you haven't answered the question.
We most certainly have.
The department that's excluded?
Okay, let's go.
Wait. 54 months of vacancies and the request was for over 50% increase in the salaries. Can you support that?
Again.
Again, just answer the question, Mark. You're asking us questions, I'm asking you questions.
Whoa.
My point, my point is, is we, obviously we, you said not to use the, it's not cut, so we'll say reductions. Mr. Thomas's department took some reductions, or is taking some reductions in it.
Absolutely he is not. He's absolutely not taking a reduction.
Okay, last night...
We budgeted $435,800 for his department this year. I mean, the last year.
Current fiscal...
What is his current budget, Mark?
Last night you said we're not going to use the, it's not cuts. Tonight it's not reductions. It's on this sheet of paper here. His department, based on the budget that he presented...
That's not what he's been given. That is what he has asked for, Mark.
Okay.
If you're going to talk about the difference in last year's budget and this year's budget...
Let's be professional here now. We're not going to argue back and forth one at a time.
Let's drop that then. Okay, I'll give you that. Let's, well, what about the department that's excluded from the list?
Let me ask you again. Do you support a 50% increase in the salary, salary line item for public works?
I do not. So answer my question then.
Okay.
What about the department that's excluded from the list?
You're talking about the fire department?
Yes.
The department that you supported reduction, reduction of two, of two personnel?
I'm not talking about personnel, okay? This has nothing to do with overtime, it has nothing to do with personnel. We took the police department and took telephone expenses away. We took technical supplies expenses away in the budget that they presented.
Chief, the increase in your operations budget from last year to this year, not, not the other chief, I'm sorry. Mr. Bruin. I said chief, and chiefs came running. The increase in your budget from, in operations only, from last year to this year is how much?
I increased it 5,500 and y'all reduced it 26,000. Plus the four months that was already reduced for the two people.
Now, does that sound like a reduction or a cut or an increase? That is a, that's a, that's a true reduction in their budget. That is a true cut.
Well, again, we can, you and I can go back all night and forth. I'm not going to change your opinion, I know that.
Mark, we don't need to go back and forth. It's the numbers. The numbers don't lie.
Well, we can disagree about some things on here. I mean, I think everybody knows where I, I can't support this. I can't. I mean, there are things on here I do, I want to support it, but there's other things on here, I still think there's, there's, there's just things I can't support.
Which is bigger, 435,000 or 461,000?
What now, I'm sorry?
What's, which is bigger, 435,000 or 461,000? I'm looking at sanitation. 435, 461.
Okay, so if you take your logic then, the 485,000...
I teach middle school, I'm trying to make it simple. Which is bigger, 435 or 461?
Again, if you take your logic, I'll try to answer your question as you answer mine.
Okay.
If you'll give me a chance and act professional about it in the, in the process. On this sheet of paper, there's $485,000 that are coming out of the total sanitation fund. Okay? So what do you, what, what's, what is that number? If it's not a cut and if it's not a reduction, what is that number?
That number... That number is based off of the request, not off of last year's budget.
And that's what I thought I stated earlier, when I said that when, when the department head made his request, I'll cut the request back, would you agree with that?
But we increased his budget.
Okay, all right.
I mean, and that, and that's why I disagreed with the across-the-board cuts to begin with, and you and I talked about this. When you've got, when you've got a department that asks for 5,500 more in a $4 million budget over their, over their budget from last year, and then you have another department that asks for $200,000 more, a 5% cut is not an equal cut.
Let me ask you this, because it's not on this sheet of paper, that's the last question I have, Mayor, I apologize for taking all the time. The 5% cut is not listed on here, the 5% cut is in addition to, the 5% reduction is in addition to what's listed on the sheet of paper, correct? Okay, all right, I'm done.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Cash, finish.
Oh, yeah.
We won't be sorry, we want to get this out. As I said last night, there's a couple things that, that you guys put in this budget, I support 100%, and there's some things I don't support, but I'm going to say it upfront, for any of those departments, I'll say it again, that's been cut, whether it's in a local agreement, or our city, and you come for this council and need those funds, I'm going to support getting those funds for you. And I think there's, I know there's two on that side over there is willing to do it, and I hope some of you other council members will do the same thing. We might not pass it, reduction, cuts, tonight, whatever you want to call it, the way all of us agrees to, but we need to pass our budget, and I will support funding those as time comes, because they're going, they're going to come back to us. I know that Parks and Rec's going to come back to us, they're going to have to, that's a whole lot of the reduction right there, cuts, or non-funded, I'll say all three of them for you. But, and when they do, I'll support trying to get that back in the budget for them, do amendment on the budget, that's how I'm looking at it.
I think it's a fact that none of you, and neither me, are going to be happy with everything at this budget.
No, agreed.
It's just a, it's just a fact.
Right.
We need to get a budget passed, we need to get moving forward, and just as you said, there will be some shortages, possibly, that their directors will have to come back to you for more money, and I would hope that at that particular time, he would certainly be receptive to, to their needs.
And, and I think we will, Mayor, and just, just like Mr. Lesby said last, or when we voted on the budget the original time, there is no perfect budget, there's no budget that everybody's going to agree on, absolutely not.
All we got is a program of spending, a guideline, and, and hope that we're certainly within the ballpark. So, any other comments? If not, I will call for a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, to accept this budget for the 2013-14 year.
Mrs. Tuckett?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
No.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingle-Sames?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. McEwen?
Yes.
We have a new budget, do we not?
We do.
Yes.
Six, takes the time, I would ask for motion that we adjourn? Motion?
Second?
Second on this, all in favor, aye?
You know the mayor, you know the number I like the most, Mayor? Five. He knows the number I like the most.